Good evening, welcome to the North Hampton City Council Meeting of June 15, 2017. And I'm City Council President Bill Dwight, and I'll be presiding tonight. And before we convene, we open up the floor to the public for public comment. The rules are, please keep your comments and remarks under three minutes. Understand that when you're speaking, the councilors are not allowed to speak under our rules. So you, it's your time and your opportunity to say what you want to say, and then you get to, if you want, you can stick around here and talk plenty afterwards. When you come up, please state your name and address, and you're free to speak on any topic of your choosing. It doesn't have to be anything pertaining to the agenda, or things that even come under our purview. So with that, I have a very blank sign-up sheet. Does anyone here want to speak? Sandy, don't want to talk?
No.
No? No? Okay. Well, then, I'm going to ask the administrative assistant to call the roll.
Counselor Bidwell?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor Dwight?
Here.
Counselor Klein?
Here.
Counselor LaBarge?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Here.
Counselor Scherer?
Here.
Here. Murphy.
Counselor Murphy? I didn't call you. Sorry.
We have a quorum. Everyone, we're all in our places with bright shiny faces, so we will convene. First up on the agenda, we have item 17.307. That's an announcement of a public hearing, and that's regarding petition received from National Grid regarding the Sonic Street. In accordance with the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 156 of the General Laws, a public hearing will be held at 212 Main Street, North Hampton, Massachusetts, at 7:05 PM. That's right here in this room, on July 13, 2017, on a petition of National Grid to erect poles and wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways in the city of North Hampton as described in the petition. So there. One-minute announcements, councils? Anybody?
I do.
Counselor LaBarge?
Thank you. I'd like to announce a community forum for preservation and enhancement efforts for Park Street Cemetery and West Farms Cemetery. The City of North Hampton Department of Public Works has begun the process of preparing a long-term master plan for preserving and enhancing both Park Street Cemetery and West Farms Cemetery. As part of the process, the city would like to hear your thoughts, ideas, and preferences. Where? Florence Civic Center, 90 Park Street, Florence. When? June 27, at 7:00 to 8:30 PM. And this event is sponsored by the Park Street and West Farms Cemetery Advisory Committee. And I think, if you can recall, I think a resident from Ward III had come in and talked about the Bridge Street Cemetery, and we also had Ruth McGrath, and I had three other residents who did intensive research, along with Wendy Boxman, on West Farms Cemetery, so we're coming along on this.
Counselor O'Donnell?
I just think we should recognize and congratulate Counselor LaBarge for receiving the award that was already well-publicized, but a reward in recognition of her outstanding constituent service and dedication to Ward VI in the city that was presented to her by Representative Peter Coquelin.
You're here. Any other announcements, or congratulations, or otherwise?
Do you want to say something about the 24-Hour Theater Project?
No.
Should I say anything about it?
You're welcome to.
Oh, which is this Saturday, at what time?
At 7:00 and 9:00 PM.
9:00 PM. Should show up and party.
Participate. It's actually, the reason I wouldn't mention is because it's actually a pay thing, as opposed to, you know, the public can show up, but they don't get in unless they pay. So that's not, usually we do announcements on that. And plus, it's personally mortifying, so thank you. Any other announcements? No? This meeting's going to go pretty quickly, actually. There are no presentations, so we go right to the consent agenda, which includes...
The mayor?
Oh, holy cats, I skipped over the mayor. The mayor, Your Honor, you have anything?
No, you don't.
Great. Nothing. Crickets. Okay. So, on the consent agenda, we have to approve 17.305 as various appointments to committees, positive recommendation by the Committee on City Services for all the following candidates. For Parks and Recreation Commission, we have James Ryan of 56 Leonard Street in Leeds. Term begins May 2017, expires June 2020, and is replacing the expired term of Thomas Parent. And Michael Laga of 33 Moser Street in North Hampton, the term starting June 2017, expiring June 2020, and it's a reappointment. On the Conservation Commission, Kevin Lake of 35 Washington Avenue in North Hampton, term to start March 2017, expiring June 2020, and this is a reappointment. Trust Fund Committee, David Herships of 22 Warburton Way in North Hampton, term to start November 2016, expiring June 2019, also a reappointment. Also, approve 17.310, appointments to committee with, again, with positive recommendation by the Committee on City Services for both candidates. On the Disability Commission, we have Chris Palamas of 659 Park Hill Road in Florence, the term to start November 2016, expiring June 2019, that's a reappointment. And the Public Shade Tree Commission, Lily Lombard of 39 Monroe Street in North Hampton, the term starting June 2017, expiring June 2020, also a reappointment. Also, item 17.345, this is to refer appointments to various committees on the, to the Committee on City Services. Board of Health, Suzanne Smith of 134 State Street in North Hampton, the term starting March 2017, expiring June 2020, which is also a reappointment. Board of Registarians, Catherine Kay of 136 Main Street in Florence, the term to start June 2017, expiring April 2019, and that's replacing the unexpired term of Janet Larson. And Council on Aging, Catherine Service of Nine Butler Place in North Hampton, term to start April 2017, expiring June 2020, a reappointment. And then the Housing Partnership, Edgardo Cancel of 19D Hampshire Heights in North Hampton, the term to start June 2017, expiring June 2020, and this is a new appointment, filling a vacancy. And Rebecca Lockwood at 46 Forest Glen Drive in Florence, the term to start June 2017, expiring June 2020, and it's also a new appointment, filling a vacancy. And then, item 17.341, this is a petition for second-hand dealer's license for sassy pants, vintage, and used clothing, to Con Street, Kathleen Malangowski, I hope I pronounced that right, is the petitioner. Also, item 17.342, this is a petition for second-hand dealer's license for Antiques Corner on 5 Market Street, and this is Louis M. Farrak is the petitioner. And then also to approve the minutes of June 1, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Okay. Now, we come to vote to approve the executive session minutes of October 6, 2016, and February 16, 2017. We just had an executive session that, where we discussed the fact that these minutes should now become available to the public now, because it involved collective bargaining. All those contracts have been settled, and it's now appropriate to release those minutes to the public so that they can see them. We are charged with periodic review throughout the year to make sure that we do not keep minutes in secrecy for too long a time. And so that's where we just came from, and these two minutes were voted on to be released in this, in this session.
Move to release.
Second.
A move to approve, I think.
Thank you. Yep. Motion's made in second to approve those minutes. Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Listen, I'm sorry, you're right, it's supposed to be a roll call. So.
Counselor Carney?
Aye.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
All right. Those are released and approved. Also, actually, to accept a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting that we just had in the executive session, which...
Move to approve.
They're in draft form, but...
Those wouldn't be posted on our agenda for tonight.
And that's a good point, plus, we haven't had a chance to see them, so.
True.
And the public got a chance to see them. So that will be on our July meeting, on the agenda for the July meeting. So now we go into recess, and so that the Finance Commission convene, presided over by Counselor Murphy.
Thank you very much, and a very short finance meeting, one item on the agenda. So, and you call our rolling, Finance, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor LaBarge?
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
So the first thing we have, we have to approve our minutes from May 23 and June 1, 2017. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then, the next is a financial order, 17.344, in order to authorize the mayor to sign a five-year vendor contract with Valley Bike. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, order that whereas North Hampton is a lead municipality in the five-community Valley Bike Share Program, and whereas it is in the city's interest to be able to sign a three-year Valley Bike Share Contract with an option for an additional two years, and whereas the City Council approval is required for every contract over three years, order that the mayor is authorized to sign a Valley Bike vendor contract for up to five years on such terms as the mayor determines to be agreeable. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion. Second.
Second.
All right. And here's the mayor to talk about it.
Good evening, councilors. So you may recall that you've earlier approved a municipal agreement between the City of North Hampton, the City of Springfield, the City of Holyoke, and the towns of Amherst and South Hadley, working with PBTA to implement a regional bike share program. Now, the coalition, as it were, is ready to go out to do an RFP. This is for all of the equipment, the bikes, the, you know, the stations, the technology, et cetera. And so this will allow us to be able to go out to bid on a, on a longer-term contract. And obviously, I need authorization to sign longer than a three-year contract. So I don't have the details of the contract. Again, we're preparing to put the thing out to an RFP, but knowing that we'll need two readings on this now and in July, we want to get the RFP ready and have the authorization to be able to sign a longer contract. So that's the reason for wanting to get this authorization.
Any questions for the mayor on the bike contract? Counselor Nash?
So, I've heard from two people who are interested in seeing that the bike stations have some sort of shelter, because it, it, so apparently, I didn't know this, but using a bike in the winter, it's easier if there's some sort of shelter to protect the bike and keep it from being wet, and also if there's some sort of cover to put gear on and take gear off. And if part of the, you know, the process of negotiating, you know, looking into this, if that could...
My understanding is these bikes will probably not stay out in the wintertime. That's not typically the model. Like, if you've seen Hubway in Boston or other bike shares, I don't believe we, the plan is to leave them out in the dead of winter, because, but, but I'll, I could check with, I could check with our folks on that and see. It tends to be just a station, and you rent the bike and, you know, wipe the seat off if it's wet, and, and away you ride. We're trying to keep these structures somewhat minimalist, because they have to be on public sidewalks or on easement space, so we're not really, I don't believe we're envisioning building a shelter over it.
I was just putting out there, this was, people were interested in this project, and...
Yep. It's good feedback, but that's not typically the model we're looking for in terms of the build-out. And we've actually gone to, we've gone out to community partners, including here in North Hampton, Cooley Dickinson, Florence Bank, Neta, who've sponsored stations, and we've kind of specked what these stations will be. So, so, so that's my response.
Thank you. It sounds great.
Albeit maybe not satisfactory, but that's my response.
The other questions on the bike contract? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great. Then, if there is no new business that any of you have, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We come out of recess and go back into the regular meeting. And the, we're doing a series of second readings on the budget, and that's what's up next. So, item 17.325, this is in order to approve the FY 2018 general fund budget, and it's a second reading. I'm going to presume that everyone would prefer to have me waive reading? Is that the preference? Okay.
Move to waive reading?
Oh, you don't, it doesn't need to be motioned. Now, as long as it's not at heads, we'll do, but yeah.
Request waive reading.
Okay.
Move to approval.
Okay. So motions are made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, second reading on the budget? Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes. All right, that passes in the second reading. Now, item 17.327, this is in order to approve the FY 2018 revolving funds, also second reading.
Move to approve.
Discussion? Pam, please.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
All right, that passes in the second reading as well. Item 17.329, this is in order to approve 29,925 from free cash, and a gift of $10,000 from the Ray Ella Brook Memorial Fund for play structure at Arcanum Field, second reading.
Move to approve.
Motion's made in second. Discussion? Roll call, Pam.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
All right, that passes in the second reading as well.
Item 17.329, this is in order to approve $29,925 from free cash, and a gift of $10,000 from the Ray Ella Brook Memorial Fund for play structure at Arcanum Field, second reading.
Move to approve.
Motion's made in second. Discussion? Roll call, please, Pam.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
I mean, yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
All right. Present as well. All right, so that passes in the second reading. Item 17.330, this is in order to appropriate free cash and approve use of gift funds to be used for the police fire, Police Department Firing Range Project, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And that passes in the second reading. Item 17.333, there are three threes, I'm sorry, in order to approve appropriation of $600,000 for the purpose of improvement of public recreational facilities, and to borrow $600,000 under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, subsection 11, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8C, and to contract for any federal, state, or other aid, including grants, available for this project, and to authorize the mayor to or his designee to take such actions as are necessary, carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this contract, the second reading.
Move to approve.
Discussion?
Thank you.
And, by the way, this is as amended, and you'll note the amendments on your agenda.
Right, but you need to include the amendments.
The amendments?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Before we move on, we're going to need, the amendments are, if you'll recall, this is, this is, this is requested by the state funding program, this is to add a third whereas that clarifies what parcels the bike paths are located on, and that they're dedicated to park and recreation purposes, and the fifth whereas is change conservation to recreation, and ordered that sixth line add energy, Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. Is that right?
Yep. Move to amend.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendments? Have a chance to look at those?
There's two separate documents.
Are those a document attached online here that's, and you may, you should have in your packet? Counselor Bidwell?
The question since I was, I missed the discussion, frustrating. Were these suggestions that were made on the floor, or made by staff at the last meeting, or have they come up between the last meeting and now?
Come up between. This is, this is from the state funding program for qualification. So this is their amendments, their proposed amendments, the language that they want in order for us to qualify.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with it?
They're not in any way, they don't in any way change the functioning of the original matter, they're just kind of preferences and...
Conservation and recreation, I'm just, you know. Everyone's okay with that? Okay. All those in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, back to the second reading and the original motion, but now as amended.
Yep.
Any further discussion on that? Okay. Roll call, please, Pam. Thank you.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherer?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell? Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
All right.
That passes in first reading. We'll be having another reading on that at our meeting in July. Item 17.321, this is in order to approve the credit incentive policy for stormwater and flood control utility, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion on this? Counselor Bidwell?
Again, I think here for first reading, I did look at the very good minutes, and I just want the mayor to know, I was really impressed with the detailed presentation that apparently involved from Director LaScalia on application of the credit and incentives policy and all the data in there. I found it very helpful to have that fairly extensive description of all the exceptions and credit that made, so my compliments to the director.
It's worth noting, actually, in this context, in front of the beacon here, is the stormwater permit goes no effect. EPA MS4 permit will regulate the stormwater in 250 municipalities in Massachusetts. And we were ahead of the ball on that, or the game, or whatever sports metaphor we're going to apply to that. So, you know, just as that discussion expands, those pressures are now in existence. Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please, Pam.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
All right. That passes in second reading. Next item is item 17.340, and that's in order to acquire any fee easement and/or other areas and land located on a land or drive for the purpose of creating memorial park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? Pam?
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
So, this ordinance, I was researching parking on Bedford Terrace, and I noticed that on Bedford Terrace, which is all long-term 10-hour parking spots, the Bedford Terrace and also additionally a section of Strong Avenue, which is also long-term parking meters, that they were both classified as 3D, which is the long-term meters, but were not classified as 4A, which refers to the long-term parking permit you can get from the parking department monthly. Every other long-term red-topped 10-hour spot is designated 3D and 4A, except for these two exceptions. I checked with the parking department, they couldn't see a reason why that was. In practice, they've been treated as every other long-term spot. The permits have been recognized always, so this is merely putting into our code what is done in practice and is no reason for it not to be.
Thank you. Cleaning up the books. Any other discussion on this? Questions? Okay. Pam?
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay.
That passes in second reading as well.
I think we missed...
Yup.
I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. Item 17.335, that's in order to reprogram $5,000 for Florence Fields Pavilion Roof, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?